We all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. First order of business is to review and approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Now to review first the minutes from the January 27th regular select board meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And then the minutes for the special meeting from July 8th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Open public comment.
You want to say anything, Chris?
Any other open public comment? If none, we'll move to guess, which we have none. Good stuff.
The weather has been great.
Yes.
Yes, and someone from, I guess, the Beaver Pond Committee put a picnic table down at the south, I call it the South Beach.
Yes, moved one down Thursday night.
Yeah, and a lot of folks have been using it.
Have they?
So they're happy, yeah. Very nice.
Excellent. All right, moving on to highway department. Paving bid selection for summer 2022, so we have two bids.
How did they compare to last year's, my big question? Per ton.
It was kind of close to the same tonnage, kind of close.
Price per ton?
Well, I don't know yet, but like how much we bid out.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming you want this in the categories? So for, who am I looking at here? Wilk?
Um, wilk.
Wilk paving. Uh, let's see, for the cold plain, um, and the, let's see, $2.45 for a total of $19,764.15. Then the concrete pavement, and again, this is the unit price, $86.50 for a total of $117,813. And then traffic control, $5,000 even. So the total for the bid for wilk paving is $142,577.15.
And what was that price per ton again, please?
Eighty-six, fifty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that is wilk, and Pike Industries is next. So cold plain, $5.50 for a total of $44,368.50. The paving per ton, and per ton is $110. The total is $149,820. Traffic control, $1.
They did that on the last one, didn't they?
Total bid, $194,189.50. And those are the bids we have.
Make a motion and go with wilk.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So wilk has been approved.
Last few years, we've been like last on the list, you know, just before it snowed.
Yeah, I noticed that last year.
I was wondering if we could talk to him or put something in the contract that, you know, would be done by, you know, October, the end of October or something.
I can talk to him and see what we can do. John Corliss was in here earlier talking to me about it and felt like it would be in August, but let me get it from the horse's mouth and get back with you.
Thank you.
So the next item under highway is right-of-way maintenance.
So, uh, John's getting bids for tree cutting and he's been making ditch repairs. All of our guys have, are, should be off of using their vacation leave and are back so we can get into the bigger projects. We're gonna start the, I think we get into this, but John and I had a meeting this morning and he's getting a dig ticket called in and we're starting Gormbridge Water Project Monday. And, and also the house on Pleasant Street that had the bushes planted out in front, I sent a letter to, um, after we'd spoken to him and he removed them sometime over the weekend, so they're gone now. And as far as right-of-way maintenance, I think that covers it.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Marble Bridge repairs.
I'm meeting with Jeff Patch on Thursday to go over procedure for replacing lights and receiving incentives through Efficiency Vermont to do that. And I'll keep everybody up to speed on that. He, he knows about the incentives and I've shared them with him, so I guess my goal from our meeting is to get an idea of what we can install, how much it will cost, and then I'll bring that back to the board and we'll have a more in-depth discussion.
Just, when you're talking to Jeff, the bridge lights are, in my opinion, very bright. You know, if he toned them down a little bit, and I assume that would save us some electricity too, so. It's like daylight when you go over the bridge there.
Anybody else have feelings about that or no?
They are very bright, I mean, they could, if it's possible, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what size those are in there now.
Okay. Uh, and then, I've kind of made this Marble Bridge week. I've got other things going on, but I'm focusing on that. And I've, I've called Guy to Desco, we've been playing some pretty serious phone tag. So I reached out to Green Mountain Masonry. He, he advised me to contact Vermont Quarry Corporation, which is across from Tassella up there, and see what the, they might not do the work, but they can come out and tell us what the best material would be to use between those cracks, because, you know, John said that Guy did it 20 years ago and you, and you see what shape it's in, so maybe we can get, um, maybe we can get another opinion on how to approach it this time. So Luca's coming Wednesday, so I got a date on the bridge on Wednesday and Thursday. And that's all my bridge updates there for you.
How about the, uh, LaFons?
You're right, and I spoke to LaFons last week and I dropped the ball. Uh, we started, he dropped the ball first and then now I'm dropping the ball, so I've got to go back out there, but I'm thinking what we can do is take off the bottom plates there that look so bad and see if LaFond, if, if John LaFons can, is his last name LaFons, I guess? John LaFond. See if he can sandblast them and then put a coating on there that's good enough to protect it. That's kind of the plan right now. So I'll go by there in the morning and see if he was able to drive by and take a look to see if he can do it. So it's Bridge Week.
All right.
It's a good old bridge.
Yeah.
Beaver Pond Pass.
The email is in your packet. The reason for the delay now is that the state had to hire an outside contractor to perform the National Historic Preservation Act Section 106 clearance. They expect the NEPA clearance back in a month and I'll continue to follow up. I was, I was following up with them so much, I decided to start ceasing the chair and the vice chair of the select board just to add a little bit of pressure there. And, um, you know, the, the first answers I was getting were that it's at the state, we don't really know what's going on, and now I've cracked the egg a little bit more and they've given us a reason for why. They're thinking once it's done with this historic review, it'll be back in, in a month. It's on the calendar and I'll reach back again before the next select board meeting and see where it's at.
Thank you.
Also did a great job of telling us how much they communicated with us in that email.
Did.
That was nice. Okay, radar signs.
Mobile radar sign has been installed on North Street going, going down the bridge and select board member Hogan and myself marked the second 25 mile per hour sign on the location for the permanent sign that we're getting soon. We, we talked about putting it at the first 25 mile per hour zone, but what we, what I don't love about that, and Mr. Hogan, Mr. Hogan agrees, is that it kind of takes away from the Procter welcome sign. It's kind of sitting right in front of it, so instead of seeing the entrance sign with the nice, you know, design around it, you're gonna be focused on the radar sign telling you to slow down. And, and from what I understand, the police kind of treat that as a, uh, they don't sit between those two areas and pull each other, pull people over. It, so we think if we get them to slow down by that second one. And I'm, I'm open for thoughts on that.
And at the second sign, you got a long shot. We're shooting almost up to the first sign, so.
Is the second one by LaFons, more or less?
Well, before LaFons. When the good road ends, you know, gets narrow, all of a sudden, it's the other side of that.
It'll start reading their speed way.
It's right by the, uh, the solar panels, the second sign.
There's a tree, there's a little bush, we've got to trim in front of it, and, but you, you'll have a straight shot of that before you get to that first 25 mile per hour.
Isn't that where they put the mobile one?
Yeah.
When they had it up there. Yeah, they chain it to the post there.
So, um, that's, that's the plan as of right now. If anybody has any thoughts on it, we're open to hearing them and, and it probably won't be here for another two weeks anyway, so you got time to think about it.
Just trivia, there was a state trooper parked at the church this afternoon running radar and there was one, at the same time, there was one parked at the top of the hill looking down at the library stop sign. Be careful.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, we budget about, since we're on the topic, we budget, I was looking over the revenues today for last fiscal year, we budget about $10,000 in those, uh, ticket fees, or we call them ordinances, but ticket fees, and last year we got about $4,000. So, there's that.
Anything else for highway department? If not, can I have a motion to move into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, V-HAB assistance.
Yeah, this is the Vermont Housing Assistance Program. In your packets is a letter that I wrote out to anyone delinquent over $750. I've been in communication with Brock and a few people with outstanding balances have already reached out to them, so as soon as, as soon as Brock, um, has someone reach out to them for assistance, they call Celia and let her know, so there's like some coordination on the bill being paid. Uh, I, I asked if I could do it myself, have them come in here or set up a computer somewhere or send them to the library, and they recommended go to them, just in case there needs to be an appeal or something, they're familiar with the case. So, that's kind of our first step in delinquencies.
That's, that's good, that gives somebody that's on hard times a chance.
And it's a nice letter, Michael.
Yes, it read a nice letter, yes.
A new generator.
Yeah, I brought this up at our last meeting and since we were using DNK to help us with the O and M manual, I, I solicited them, solicited them to help with getting us some more information on the generator grant for the, uh, for the water treatment plant. They informed me that the state's not taking any new applications at the moment, um, but that funding could open back up again soon and I'll just keep an eye on it.
Is that down on Field Street?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion for the Water Commissioners? Not, uh, motion to move to the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, RFQ update for General Engineering Services.
I was hoping to have this RFQ ready by this select board meeting, but people have been on vacation, so it should be ready by the next one. The town's wastewater on-call engineering services RFQ has lapsed. It's not a problem with our, the project that we have going on now, I spoke to the state about it, we're already rolling, we've got the loan agreement signed, so the, 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 we are already under contract with Aldrick and Elliott when we started the project, we're good. I've spoken with Tom Brown, with the state, and we both had the idea of instead, instead of narrowing down the scope of work just to wastewater, this time when we send out an RF, a request for qualifications, we send it out to be a little bit more broad so that we've got engineers on call for whatever the needs are, instead of having kind of piece it all together. So I was kind of, I wanted to get your thoughts on that idea.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, well, be, you know, any problem expanding that and maybe we'll find out that there's too much involvement outside, but let's look at it.
And, uh, so what delayed it was I was waiting for an example of one and Williston, Williston does the same thing, so Tom Brown sent me the, the Williston RFP and what I'll do is kind of cater that to Procter and then present it to you at the next meeting.
Okay, anything else for Sewage Commissioners? If not, can I have a motion to return to the regular board meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Managers report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The, I'm still performing the interim zoning administrator duties. This, I, this will probably continue until the Rutland Regional Planning Commission fills the void. I, I've had very little interest from people who want to take, take over the position, but I, I'll, I'll keep hoping, but, um, anyway. The local hazard mitigation plan financial reporting grant closeout is totally complete. The assistant town clerk and treasurer searched, the position has been closed, and I plan to review applications with Celia this week, and, uh, the interview will hopefully be over by, uh, the week of our next select board meeting. If we can follow my timeline, I'd like to have somebody here in August. So I've got, and, but I've got a stack of applications, we've got 30 or 40, so I've got quite a few to go over. Pool operations and maintenance. I, I paid Lisa a visit on her last weekend up there and, uh, and we kind of looked at the different things going on and we talked about this at our last select board meeting. So I just went ahead and reached out to the state seeking assistance with the aquatic plant growth in the pool, which has gotten inconvenient to say the least. Uh, the, the growth is considered a native species in Vermont according to the state rep, uh, and could be labor-intensive to maintain. I, I looked into different options like, uh, lake rakes, but, um, Megan Canucci told me they tried that quite a few years ago and it's not a one-and-done kind of deal, it's a constant maintenance activity. Uh, and then any kind of, um, it's, it's an exempt Class II wetland, but any kind of, application we were to put in the pond to get rid of the plants we'd need a permit for, that takes about three, four months, it's not gonna happen this year. So, uh, we're gonna talk more about it at the Parks and Rec meeting on, meeting on Wednesday, maybe somebody will come up with something between now and then. Uh, I had a meeting with Butch Shaw, we discussed the state budgets and, um, and, you know, one of his main concerns are the shortfalls of some of the one-time funding initiatives. I guess an example of this would be like, uh, dispatch moving from a state to like a regional program, you know, there's kind of no long-term, there's a lot of money out there right now, but whether that's sustainable or not was kind of a concern. Uh, he, and he expressed interest at being at our next meeting, so I'll send him, send him an invite, hopefully we'll have a visit.
Definitely.
So this is big news here, but, um, the Vermont Community Development Planning Grant Update, the town was not awarded the VCDP grant. The state said that they awarded shovel-ready projects and would like us to apply again in December. I believe we will have a better chance, uh, in December because Zion is actually closing on the building in August and, and a few environmental planning, planning initiatives from the past efforts still had not been 100% finalized. So I'm, I'm hopeful Zion's ready to partner with us again and we can apply for that funding. And Zion's already looking other places, so they're, they're still moving right along. The tack meeting report, I was about five minutes late to the meeting, preparing for a family visit, but I did review the minutes when I put them in your packets and I saw that traffic studies were available. And this is something that came up at our planning, at one of our planning commission meetings, and, uh, so I asked Devin if we could get one put right in downtown and he put us on the list, so I'm, I'm hoping that'll be complete by the end of the month and then we'll have some traffic data that we can use to plan around.
That would be good information.
Yeah, so I was excited, I was excited that that came about.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, but I also saw, I think the state's got quite a few up already.
Yeah, I think I saw someone run, couple.
There's one, uh, by the old Procter Bank actually right now, counter out.
Goes in right in town.
Going across the road, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think it'd have, it'd hurt to have one right up here if it was off.
What we would, the planning commissioner would like to see those numbers, yeah.
So it's happening. Uh, I, I finally went up to the Chitting and Watershed, John took me and, uh, it's, it's beautiful and I learned a whole lot and I think it'd be nice to do some hiking or bike trails up there, but I'm not really a hiking or bike trail expert, so maybe somebody will take the lead on that one day.
That must have been an adventure.
Oh, it was. Yeah, he didn't warn me of it either, so I didn't have the right gear on, but that was kind of nice, he showed me the, uh, I didn't know that the fish hatchery was up there, so I saw the fish hatchery and, um, saw the old treatment plant. Pretty interesting.
Yeah, that was, been there since when?
Many, many years.
Yeah, it, it's actually kind of incredible that the water was coming that far.
Yes, yes.
How they laid that pipe for that eight miles.
Oh, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, looked like good water too.
Oh, yeah. It was.
It was good water.
Was that right?
Yeah, it was good water, it was soft water too, you didn't, you know. But, uh...
Well, so it was, it was a nice trip, it was a nice trip out of the office, get out in the field for a little while.
Big piece of woods.
Oh, yeah. The, so our phone and internet provider, their promotional plan ended, so we're paying a little bit more than we have been for our phone bills. I've gone ahead and took the opportunity to, um, get some quotes from other people and again, I ran into people taking vacation, but I'm hoping at our next select board meeting, I'll have some quotes. And it, it took a little while too, I had to get all the different locations for, for all the different lines and all that together, so. Yeah, hopefully we get, we get a good deal on it. There was a dog bite, uh, the town nor the sheriff received information on it. What happened was a, um, a report came from, to me, well, came to Celia, directly from the medical provider. I called the sheriff, the sheriff didn't know anything about it, Judy didn't know anything about it, but I told Judy, because she's our acting safety officer, and I, I even called the, the victim just so they knew what they needed to do if they wanted law enforcement to take action, because I didn't want her to think that, you know, the town was just gonna take care of it, so never got a call back, so it's kind of a cold case.
Where did this happen roughly?
I'd say today's Monday.
Don't know where.
Oh, Route 3.
Yes, where on Route 3, okay.
That's all we got.
Okay.
And, um, almost done now. I've attended the planning commission meeting, the planning commission established an energy committee. At the next meeting, they will lay out a mission statement and establish goals that align with our existing enhanced energy plan. Compensation surveys are due and Celia and I are gonna work together next week to get those in. And lastly, we're closing out the end of the year, we're doing a few, um, last-minute audit deliverables, and then Jordan will be back here in August to, to finalize that process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, discussion and action items from the board, has everyone signed the orders?
Yes.
And the next item is sheriff's report. Um, I did have a concern from a resident on, um, East Street that, um, cars are going, coming into town too fast, uh, which has been a concern before, um, so the request was to, if we could step up, and you and I have already talked about this, if we could step up, um, some radar over there, that would be very much appreciated by the residents on that part of town.
And they do go fast, I've been taking my bike through there in the mornings and it, I don't know if it's an illusion or not, but coming up the hill, right in front of the library?
Yeah.
It just looks like they're flying, so.
On Route 3?
Yeah.
Going across? Yeah.
This specifically was past TNT, past Newton Street, um, between Newton and Field, basically.
Yeah.
Page three, it's probably a glitch, but we were.
Yes, I see West Rutland.
We were billed for five and a quarter hours of West Rutland patrolling.
Yeah, I saw them.
Would you mind just asking about that, Michael?
And that'll be good, because that'll be the second time.
Yeah, six, seven seconds.
Usually sometimes takes twice.
I did also question if it really took three hours to move the speed cart and set it up on North Street, because that's how much time they built us for. I mean, that seems like a lot.
Well, I, I thought that was a courtesy they did for, you know, their clients, but apparently not.
We were built for it.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever gotten billed for that in the past, so.
I don't remember seeing that, no.
Just, that seems like a lot of time to, to do that, although I don't know what's entailed in doing it, so maybe.
Yeah, and, and honestly, the sheriff hasn't been here, hasn't come to a meeting since I've been here, and I was gonna invite him this time, but Judy was, Judy was away, um, and, so maybe next meeting I'll invite him over, we can just go over some things. It'd be a good time to do it anyway, we just, you know, contract agreement into it.
I don't think he's ever come to one of our meetings.
He came to the first one when he got elected, in contract renewal, yeah, it was at the library.
They'll probably get charged for it.
It'll be good for him to hear a little bit, it'll be good, it'll be good for him to hear a little bit, little bit of community feedback, if anything.
Eight hours right there, at $38 a pop.
Okay, anything else for sheriff's report? Uh, Act 186, tax sales prohibited during pending V-HAB applications.
This is just, um, informational material for you, but the town cannot issue a tax sale if the property owner has applied for V-HAB assistance currently, and I'll let you know if that changes. And I did ask VLCT if that applies to shut-offs and they said that it does not for delinquencies. But we'd still, it'd be good to practice due diligence to maybe put that on a notice that we were sending them for a shut-off, that they have the ability to apply, but we've kind of preemptively already done that, but we'll do it again.
Stormwater master plan, request for proposals.
Uh, the town needs to review requests for proposals by the end of the week, I'm sorry for that short timeline, I got them last week, and, uh, I, I'm currently the representative of the town at, on the selection committee with, in, and we're partnering with the Conservation District on this, so, um, I, I'm gonna leave it up to the select board, I can do it, or Judy has shown interest in being the representative and doing it with me this week, however you all would like to do it, if, if you do. However, you all would like to do it if, if you do want that input. We only, there's only two of them.
Yeah.
Fine.
Gonna trust Judy and, if she wants to.
Michael, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, park and ride grant program.
This is a new grant that came out and I try to keep everybody informed about it. It also came up at the planning commission because in our enhanced energy plan, there's a section of transportation and it encourages, um, systems like park and rides. There's even a part in the enhanced energy plan that says to use the town hall parking lot as a park and ride, but if anybody knows anything about the, the, the area we have out here.
Yeah.
Ain't gonna work.
Now, you had an idea that didn't sound too bad to me.
Yeah. Uh, you know, we've got the park across the street here and what, and this is just an idea, is what you could do is cut the curb out and put, and, and add some parking. I think that'll help kind of, um, make that look like a park now, because I, I have the opportunity to park there, but I don't, because it doesn't look like a place that's very welcoming to people to park. So, and, and a park that welcomes people, that's the first thing you kinda wanna do is bring them in. So, it could act as, so if you cut the curb out across the street, you could fit, I bet, 15 to 20 parking spots in there, it could act as a park and ride, it could act like parking for downtown and it could act as parking for the park. So, that's something that the planning commission is probably gonna talk about at our next meeting. So, you got plenty of time to think about that idea, but it's just one that I've kinda, that has jumped out at me. And it's kinda close to Route 3, so you can put your park and ride sign there, people can park and then go wherever they need to go.
As long as it's not in front of the monument, that would be my.
Yeah, I would be.
Well, you know, and you could even do like a, a bump out crosswalk there.
Yeah, or, or bring it more to that north end by the, the pump station. Although, of course, but we've got that tank in there, too, in the ground.
Holding bag.
The storage tank for the pump station.
Yeah, when it becomes a serious consideration of the planning commission and the board and we start getting into its, and we do get to the design phase.
It would have to come to the board first.
I'll make sure that, that process is transparent so everybody can have a, a word on it. But, any, any thoughts on it, just kinda?
I think a park and ride is good, um, and, and I think that's, I like the idea of the parking spaces here on, on Main Street. You know, that, hopefully this building will be more utilized in the future here and there's certainly no parking out here.
Yeah.
That would help our businesses, would help.
Well, and if the day ever comes, you'll have the entrance to the Beaver Pond Trail here.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be a starting point for that.
Yeah, or worst case, we could maybe get some property over from the marble company across from the Carish Rills.
That's my thoughts on park and rides.
As long as it's not in front of the, I'd have some objections if it was in front of the monument.
Okay. Um, facilities use agreement for tapestry.
Um, yeah, and I, I've gone ahead and signed this because I was under the impression that, I was looking for a motion that we had made in the past on granting me full authority to sign off on the facility use agreements and then presenting them in packets. I didn't wanna get out, out of my lane or ever step by doing that without a formal motion, so, uh, I'll probably put it on our, on our next agenda to do so with approval from the chair, but I've gone ahead and signed this tapestry agreement and if anyone has any questions about it, I can answer them.
Tapestry this year from what I've seen, just walking the kids to the pool is much more organized, uh, much more help, adults, uh, it, it's, last few years, they, they were spread out for, and, you know, this year that's, they're doing a great job.
And I agree, and Lisa did a good job working with them. I went up there, I saw them all walking up there, I saw blue shirts, they looked like it was probably them. So, I was there when they showed up, they had parents, they've got their own lifeguard with them, um, and they're only talking, they're really just coming up there on Fridays, so, and I've included the insurance packet and that's my, uh, that's kinda my spiel on tapestry and the facility use agreement.
Perfect. Okay.
Good.
Any other items, uh, that need to be discussed or not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
They're adjourned.